I'm Kristy Hemingway, host of Ed Curation, a part of the Education Podcast Network, just like the show you're listening to now. Shows on the network are individually owned, and opinions expressed may not reflect others. Find other interesting education podcasts at edupodcastnetwork.com.
Hey, welcome back. Steve here, and today I'm talking with A.J. Crable. He is the author of Great on Their Behalf: Why School Boards Fail, How Yours Can Become Effective. What an awesome book, a much-needed read. What an amazing conversation. You're gonna love this episode. Thanks so much for listening, and if you could share it, that would be so cool, too. But before you go, it would be awesome if you went to my website, stevenmiletto.com/reviews, and left a review for the podcast. Could you do that for me? That'd be so cool. The other way you can do it is, like, if you're listening to me on the Podbean app, you could go there and leave a review, or all the other different podcast platforms that you may listen to me on. Thanks so much for doing that. You are awesome. Enjoy the show.
It's the Education Podcast, your favorite show, with lots of groovy guests, and they share what they know. So crank it up to 10 and let your neighbors know that here's another show with Dr. Steve Miletto, teaching, learning, leading K-12, teaching, learning, leading K-12, teaching, learning, leading K-12, ah, ah, with Dr. Steve Miletto.
Improving student outcomes is A.J. Crable's relentless focus. He currently serves as a conservator at DeSoto, Texas Independent School District. During his guidance, DeSoto made double-digit literacy gains and improved from having F ratings in areas of academics, finance, and governance to the district earning B ratings. He's also faculty at the Leadership Institution of Nevada, collaborator with the Effective School Boards Initiative, and National Director of Governance at the Council of the Great City Schools in Washington, DC. He served as Deputy Commissioner at the Texas Education Agency, and he spearheaded reforms as Board Chair of Kansas City, Missouri Public Schools that doubled the percentage of students who are literate and numerate, and eventually led KCPS to full accreditation for the first time in decades. Crable received the Education Commission of the state's James Bryant Conan Award, which recognizes extraordinary individual contributions to education. A.J., thanks for joining me today, and say hi to everyone.
Hey, thanks so much, Stephen, for having me.
Well, I'm glad you're here. And before we get started, we gotta talk about a couple of your YouTube shorts, because in these episodes, you're riding what appears to be an electric unicycle. I mean, this is too cool. All right, what inspired you to do this?
I haven't, I really don't enjoy driving, and especially when I lived in Austin. Anyone else who's ever lived in Austin probably doesn't actually enjoy driving either. And so I haven't owned a car in quite some time, but that my electric unicycle is just my way of getting around town. So every now and then, somebody would spot me and snap a video.
Nice.
And so some folks have strung some together over time and emailed them to me. My favorites, though, are ones where I've been spotted visiting schools. Often, I would visit some of our high schools or middle schools across the state, and we'd kind of zoom through the quad or something like that, just as a way of stirring up interest. And I can either, as the random outsider guy in a suit and tie, I can try to awkwardly approach students to ask them about their learning experience and things like that, or I can just zoom past them, and they'll flock to me, and then we can have a great conversation about their hopes and dreams and aspirations. So it's been quite the shtick when visiting schools.
I can only imagine. And one of those videos that I watched is you on a school campus, and you see the kids going, what? Because you're literally, you are in a suit and tie on this unicycle and doing very well at it. And that is so cool, because it's like, yeah, I've not seen this one before. And I can imagine the kid's doing the same thing, coming right to you, wanting to ask, what's going on with you? And it's cool stuff.
Probably the only frustrating thing about the entire experience, and this wasn't just true at schools I visited, this was totally true in my neighborhood. So I would, because this is how I got to and from work every single day. And so I'd be zooming home from work on my little electric unicycle, and go flying past the kids in my block, like, A.J., 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 we want to ride it, we want to ride it. And when I ordered this thing, I'd never ridden one of these. I didn't know what I was doing. And so I had it delivered to my office, like undercover of darkness. And so I would wait for everybody to leave the office at like 8 o'clock at night in a government office, you know, in the capital of Austin, Texas. I'd be clinging on to the sides of cubicles, trying not to die while I'm trying to learn how to balance all those things. That's how I learned to ride it, is I know I can admit this, since I'm no longer a state employee, but that's how I learned how to ride it. So it took me like two weeks to master this thing. So imagine my frustration and heartbreak. When I'm zooming along, kids in the neighborhood is like, hey, A.J., we want to ride it. Like, yeah, no problem. Now, it's probably going to take you about two weeks to figure this out. You gotta be steady here. Let me show you how to do it. And I try to hold them up, and then they just zoom away. It's like, wait a minute, whoa, hold on, wait, stop. What just happened? Have you ridden one of these things before? Oh, no, but this is easy. Like, no, this is not easy. Y'all need to stop playing. Y'all have done this before, right? No. Why did it take you two weeks to figure this out, old man? It's like, okay, we're done here. Give me my wheel back. I'm going home.
That would not be fun. That's like, yeah, thanks. Well, I gotta tell you, you look comfortable on it, especially, one of the things we talked about beforehand is when you're in the streets there, and there's cars going by you and stuff like this. And I'm like, wow, that's a trip right there.
Well, when I lived in Austin, Austin drivers, I suspect, are used to the weirdness that is Austin's kind of reputation. And so I got pretty, you know, pretty good, people really shared the road and were really kind and thoughtful about me. Living in Houston now, and I gotta tell you, people just see some weirdo on a unicycle, electric unicycle, and they're thinking, hey, y'all, there's 50 points right there. Let's go get it. And so I am much more cautious. I was zooming around the neighborhood, but definitely not across town. That's Uber for me, or just catch the bus.
Excellent. Yes, that's fun and games right there. But good stuff. Well, kudos for doing that. And that's awesome. You look comfortable, like, as far as, like, you've been doing it all your life. There we go.
It's a lot of fun to ride.
I bet. Our focus is on your recent book, Great on Their Behalf: Why School Boards Fail, How Yours Can Become Effective. Why'd you write this book?
You know, in a lot of ways, this is a book that I wish that I had had, that offered just a structured way of thinking about, how can I actually live out my aspirations for serving students? Because the reality of the situation, when I joined my school board, I had absolutely no idea what I was doing. I had no idea what effective governance looks like. I knew I had a heart for children. And my experience across the width and breadth of the nation is, that's true wherever I go. It's the school board members, you know, the common thread among us is that we are deeply invested in what's possible for children in our respective communities. But caring about children is necessary but insufficient. It's a necessary piece of the work, but if that's all you got, then it's actually pretty likely that you're going to do more harm than good. And that there are specific adult behaviors in the boardroom that give rise to setting the stage for improvements in student outcomes in the classroom. Like, we can create the conditions. We really can, and there's meaningful evidence that supports that. But there are specific behaviors that requires, and for the most part, those behaviors are not intuitive. And so the intention of this book is to try to capture, what are a lot of those non-intuitive lessons, is that you're probably not just going to magically stumble into of your own accord, that it really helps to have a framework, and it helps to have a coach to help you implement that framework. And so for all of the folks who are leading a student outcomes-focused approach to governing all the coaches out there that we've certified over the years, and that are doing this work, for them, they've been able to use this as a guide for the boards that they're serving, and for board members who don't yet have a coach, definitely go get one. It'll make your journey a lot smoother. But ideally, this is for the folks like me who didn't have a coach on day one, that this is a starting place to try to identify what would it look like to get intensely focused on improving student outcomes.
I love it. That's awesome. You know, something that you've said, and you kind of touched on just a little bit, whether you're talking about, here's a statement that I've heard you say, "Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, starting with school boards." What do you mean by this?
I was actually visiting with a group of aspiring school board members over the weekend, and one of them lifted up this phrase, because it's what I show on the overhead projection for basically 18 hours of this two-day workshop. And she said, you know, at the bar, I've been thinking about that statement that you just keep kind of beating into our eyeballs all weekend long, that I really enjoy, is that it clarifies that there is nothing wrong with our children, that where there might exist deficits in what our students know we're able to do, those deficits aren't grounded in them, those deficits are grounded in us. It's grounded in, have we created the conditions for their greatness? That that potential, that capacity for high achievement is already within all of our young scholars, and that it's really on us as adults to modify our adult behaviors in ways that better align with creating conditions for improvements in student outcomes, that we don't have to wait for the right kids, or for the right parents, or anything like that, that they're already here. Now, the question is, what adjustments am I going to make? How am I going to show up differently to live into what's possible for them?
I love that. You know, it's so important, it's so important for them to hear this. This is, and I'm going to say this a couple of times over and over again, they gotta, your book should be required reading for anybody in a board. So, you know, so let's take into the next step, which is, so why do school boards fail?
Yeah, this is, this was one of the harder parts of the book. What it is that we can do to help boards set students up for success, that part pretty much wrote itself. That was pretty, pretty easy, honestly. The harder part was actually sitting down, and I spent a lot of time on this, and trying to analyze, what is the sum total of all the lessons that my team and I have learned over time, and how do I codify that in a way that is clear for folks where the gaps are, in a way that illuminates what are solutions to the gaps? Because it's not enough to just call out what people are doing that isn't working. Like, that's not helpful, folks. Like, you really need to, how do we diagnose exactly where the dysfunctions might be, so that we can actually take action relative to those dysfunctions? What we've coalesced around is there are three key drivers for adult behavior change. Like, if we say that student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, it obligates us to have a clear vision for what drives adult behavior change. We've stumbled across these three key drivers for adult behavior change. Knowledge, what do you know? Skill, how can you use what you know? And mindset, what is my view of the world? And of the three, we find that mindset is by far the most powerful ever for being transformative in the lives of children, that as I shift my view of the world, and how I make meaning of the things that are unfurling around me, that my adult behaviors shift radically to be in alignment with that view of the world. If my belief is that little A.J. doesn't want to learn, then that gives rise to one set of behaviors, regardless of what my knowledge and skills are. But if I have a shift, a transformation in belief, a transformation in worldview, such that now my view of the world is that little A.J. definitely wants to learn, and that there's just this gap between where he's at and where he wants to be, and where we want him to be, and my job is to help be the bridge to span that gap. Inside of, in that moment, my knowledge and skills haven't changed. In that moment, his knowledge and skills haven't changed. Nothing's changed, except for my view of the world. And inside of that view of the world, my behaviors begin to shift to be in alignment with this empowering view of what's possible for little A.J. And so with this framework of looking at what are the knowledge, skills, and mindset that might be lacking, the presence of which could really make a difference for little A.J., I set about trying to identify, where do we see these biggest gaps? In the areas of knowledge, the biggest gaps tend to be around training. In short, almost all of the safety nets, almost without exception, and we did studies, and they're in the book, and you can read the data on the studies, but essentially, almost all of the safety nets that are intentionally in existence to prepare board members for how to effectively serve students systematically don't ever touch on the topic. I want to say that again. I don't want to be unclear about this. The safety net's designed to help school board members serve students systematically avoid the topic of improving student outcomes. What they do spend a lot of time on is the training for board members. There's a lot on legal stuff, how not to break the law, how not to go to jail, how not to violate state statute, how not, all the don'ts and don'ts and don'ts, that is pretty much in there. That's well covered. In all 50 states, plus Puerto Rico, plus DC, you've got plenty of training that's available out there for all of that. But training around, what is it that we want students to know and be able to do? How do we articulate that as a goal? How do we monitor progress toward that? How do we align the resources in the organization around those meticulously-designed SMART goals about student outcomes? That exists almost nowhere, whether you're looking at organizations of school boards, one of which I'm very strongly affiliated with, and has been just as big of a culprit of this as many other organizations of school boards. And I call out my own organizations. When I was a school board member, my state school board association that I served on the board of also, as we looked at the state offerings, I mean, so this isn't, this isn't a lack of people wanting to create greatness for children, it's just, we've been looking in the wrong places. And I say that not to suggest that we should delete what's out there. I'm saying, if the balance of what board members learn is how not to break laws, if the balance of what they learn is how to get a bond passed, we have categorically failed children as a sector. We haven't provided board members with the knowledge they need to be great on behalf of the students they serve. And so that's the knowledge sector. Then there's the skills, how do you actually implement those things? Obviously, if we're not teaching the knowledge, then we never get around to the skills. And then finally, it's the mindset. And it's easily possible that a board member could spend an entire term on a school board and never get clear that the only reason the school system exists is to improve student outcomes, never get clear that the role of the job is to represent the vision and values of the community in a way that drives performance improvements in what students know and are able to do. And so inside of the mindset that what I'm here to do, and this is why I hear board members all across the country say, well, I ask them, why does the board exist? Well, we hire and fire the superintendent, we set policy, we adopt the budget. That is not why the school board exists. That's not why the school board exists. That is a failed mindset. And I want to be clear about it. That is a failed, it is a mindset, when I describe it as a failed mindset, it is not a mindset that will align the board's behavior with improvements in student outcomes. Not automatically. If the board gets there, they got there by happenstance, not by intention. That is not why the board exists. Those are certainly things the board does. But the mindset that this is why we exist leads me to believe that as long as I'm just setting some policy, and I'm hiring and firing the superintendent, and I'm adopting the budget, that I've done the job. But no, the job is to represent the vision and values of the community in a way that aligns the organization around improvements in student outcomes. That's why the board exists. And if boards don't stand inside of that mindset, get clear about that purpose and stand inside of it, then all too often, it's easy to pass a budget and then to think that we've done the work of the board. No, you've done a task, but you haven't necessarily attended to why the board exists. Oh, well, we've adopted some policy. That means we've done the work. No, you've completed a task, and it's a necessary task. But that doesn't mean that you've actually accomplished. This is like if, in football, somebody said, well, the way we win the game is we get first downs. Well, no, that is something you do, but that's not how you win the game. You don't get any points on the board because you got a first down. You get points on the board when you get it in the end zone. You actually have to score. Children learning is what is scoring in public education. And so to have our scoreboard be, we pass policies, to have our scoreboard be, we hired and fired a superintendent, to have a scoreboard be, we pass the budget, we're measuring first downs, but we're not measuring scores. Inside of the mindset that our job is to attend to these adult inputs, what's possible for children, it's a little bit less and less every day. These three areas, the failure of knowledge, failure of skill, failure of mindset, are basically the first chapters of the book, they articulate, where have we gone wrong in these areas? And what would it look for boards to be great on behalf of the students they serve?
I love that. You know, it's, I've been in public education for 36 years, getting ready to go my 37th, and I work with superintendents and their boards now. And, but I remember as a teacher, the only time I ever thought about the school board was when, like, my yearbooks group got recognized for something, or, you know, one of the students at the building got recognized, or something like this. You know, as an assistant principal, you really didn't want the board to have anything to do with you. And then, as a principal, what was interesting was, you know, and the differences between school systems, because, like, I got visited by a couple of board members one time, because they felt like I should be selling, I had 400, I'll never forget this number, 418 parking spots, and a couple of, I wouldn't sell to freshmen and sophomores, because they didn't need to have it yet, and they don't, you know, they're just, if they're old enough as a freshman to get a driver's license, or something else going on there, but, right. And, but I got visited, and they said, hey, you know, you should, how many parking spots you got here? Because we noticed that you got some empty parking spots, you know. I said, well, yeah, that's because we got kids in different programs that drive to those programs and come back to school and go back. And they said, well, if you've got empty spots, shouldn't you, I mean, they didn't listen to me at all. They said, you should be selling those spots. And I, and I said, I said, you know, if we had everybody here at the same time, we've sold like 40 beyond 418. But, you know, they were kind of relentless about that, and that's a whole nother story for another time. But my point is, though, is that, you know, between that and, you know, coaches and stuff like that, isn't that kind of something?
Buses, books, masks, you name it, parking spots, did we get the right brand of lawnmower? Do we get the right brand of tractor? And like you, I don't have to make up any of these. This is pulling from memory.
It's crazy, isn't it? So, but that's not what they're supposed to really be focused on. And I love what you're talking about, because this is, you know, let's look at what, how we, how we score, and what we do, which is awesome. So, you know, one of the things that you've said is that there are four types of school boards, but there should only be one. So can you share these types?
Yeah. One of the things I describe in the book, and this, again, really gets at where, where are we kind of falling down as a sector? Where have we kind of missed, missed the school bus, so to speak? And part of this, again, it's around, what is the board focused on? And where is the board's focus? What is it attending to? And as we were thinking through this, we wound up coming up with these four different folk I that governing bodies often rally around. You know, the first one, which we don't see much in school boards, is a contribution-focused board. You really see this more in, like, your cultural boards, like the symphony board, or, you know, the museum board. This is, it's contribution-focused. How do you get on the board? You're cutting a check. And for those type of cultural organizations, that makes sense. I wouldn't want that to be the case for a school board. Like, how do you get on the school board? Whoever writes the biggest check to the school district, that's who gets on the school board. But in private schools, maybe that's the case. But there's a contribution-focused board. That would be deeply problematic, if that's what public education was based on, for a variety of reasons. It might, it might feel like it ceased to be public education to that point. Next kind of board is a founder-focused board, a board that really seems to find its identity in supporting the founder of the organization. And even though public schools don't quite have a founder, sometimes there's a superintendent who is so popular that boards get into thinking that our job is to support this super-popular superintendent, where it's, you know, our job isn't to hold them accountable, our job is to, you know, hold them up. And, and I get the instinct behind that. It's not one that is actually going to serve our students. Invariably, you wind up over time where the interests and needs of our students and of this great leader, the founder, whoever diverge. I don't see this as much in public boards, though I have seen it sometimes in public school boards, where people got a little bit too enamored with the superintendent, where this person is no longer being held accountable. Where I see this more often is with charter boards notorious for having a charismatic, powerful founder, who actually loves children, is probably great at their job, but the job of the board can't be around honoring the founder. It always has to be around honoring the children that the founder's job is to serve. And if for some reason, the founder falls off, and the team stops scoring, then you gotta let that founder go and find ourselves a new quarterback. And so this founder-focused board can be really problematic. Fortunately, like I said, it's less a thing with public schools, but it's still out there, something to be mindful of. The third type is patronage boards, and a lot of our school boards live squarely in this land. Patronage boards, it's all about getting someone on the board whose role is to extract resources from the organization, and to return those resources back to their patron who got them on the board in the first place. This most often happens with vendors. Think of the city council that's been totally captured by developers. And so the people who are busy doing the, building the buildings around town, they've rallied together and hired pro-development city council members. Now, the city council member's job is to extract value from the city in the form of abatements and permissions, you know, in eminent domains and whatnot. And then that's problematic when you put that in the context of a school system. If we get any vendors, anybody who has a contract with the school system, coming together and saying, we're going to get these people elected so that they'll support our contract, that's problematic. That's a patronage-focused board. Then finally, there's the outcomes-focused board, the board that's rallying cries, there's a specific result that we need to create for our customers. Think of the hospital. It says, our job is to improve patient outcomes. Think of the neighborhood association that says, our job is to improve resident outcomes. Think of the school board. It says, our job is to improve student outcomes. And that that is our only reason for being, and that if the patrons aren't happy, that's not our primary obligation. And if the founder or the charismatic leader isn't happy, that's not our primary obligation. Our primary obligation is, are we improving outcomes? Are we causing improvements in what students know and are able to do? My aspiration, you know, to this book and to the work of my team, is that nationwide, all 14,000 school boards will embrace and stand in their power, is student outcomes-focused boards.
That's awesome. You know, it's, there's, just as a note, I had to eliminate some questions and stuff like this, and what I was thinking about asking you, because I'm like, oh, I'm gonna, I think I could talk to you a couple of days, and then you start charging me. But this is so powerful. I mean, you know, one of the things that happens as a result of, you know, what's going on in a, in a school system, is that at some point, I think some school boards forget that, I don't know, that there's parents, and, and, you know, and that some of the school board members actually are parents themselves. How can parents get involved and run for school boards?
Probably one of the things that breaks my heart the most is I visit with so many parents across the country, and my working with school systems across the nation, who seem to be looking for someone else to show up and serve their children. And they seem to have kind of instinctively and subconsciously discounted themselves as that person that they might be looking for. You know, I got that whole be the change thing, like, I'm looking for somebody to come be the change. Like, have you looked in the mirror lately? You might be the one. And the more that I've analyzed this, the more I've realized that a lot of folks just have a misunderstanding about the nature of the school board, that they think that the school board is supposed to be a bunch of educational experts who are helped making day-to-day decisions about how school systems function. And that's not the case. School boards only exist to represent the vision and values of the community. And so the only criteria for being an effective school board member is that you can represent the vision and values of your community. If you can do that, if you're willing to listen for the vision and values of your community, willing to studiously write them down in the form of goals that describe what we want our students to know and be able to do, guardrails that describe what are the non-negotiable values, if you're willing to spend the time monitoring progress toward them, and aligning resource toward them, communicating about them. If you are willing to be a representative of the community's vision and values, then you are ready. You have all of the skills, all of the prerequisites necessary to be an effective school board member. A lot of people think, oh, well, I'm not an attorney, but the job of the board is not to be a legal expert. Well, I'm not an accountant, the job of the board is not to be a financial expert. These things emanate from this flawed mindset about governing, that, oh, our job is to hire and fire the superintendent, adopt the budget, and set policy. Well, then we think, I've got to be an education expert, or a finance expert, or a legal policy expert, because that's what the board does. This is why that mindset is such a flawed mindset, is because it is leading people to believe that they do not have what it takes, when in reality, they probably do. The board is not an educational expert. It does not matter if you have all former superintendents on the board. The board is not hired by the community to be an educational expert. The board is hired by the community for one reason or one reason only. That's to represent the community's vision and values. And so my message to every parent out there, you already have everything within you that it takes to be an effective school board member, as long as you're willing to put in the work to authentically listen for and represent the vision and values of your community.
You know, that's so powerful, because I've, you know, I've been in communities, and I was principal of three different schools that needed change. That's what I market myself as, is to help come in and, and focus the school on the kids' academic skills, and as well as get the environments under control, and so forth, and so on. And one of the things that ran into a lot were, you know, parents that should actually just step forward, and they say to them, why aren't you on the board?
And they're looking to the left, looking to the right, like, I don't know who's coming.
Right. And they literally, you know, it's literally, that's exactly right. I mean, it's just like, and you try and get them to take that step forward, and they're looking the other way and saying, I think John over there wants to be talked to. Go away from me. But that's, that's good, good stuff. I mean, all right. So what makes a school board effective? I mean, you've got five steps to an effective school board. So can you give us a little preview of that?
Yeah, and it's all things that we've already talked about. The first step is mindset. The first step is mindset. If I don't have a mindset that our work is to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes, that is the only reason school systems exist. School systems don't exist to have a balanced budget. School systems don't exist to keep parents happy. School systems don't exist to ride employment in the county. School systems don't exist to feed children. School systems don't exist to take kids on field trips. Like, school systems don't exist for any of these things. We don't exist to have great buildings, great facility, none of that. The, the school systems exist for one reason and one reason only, that's to improve student outcomes, to cause growth in what it is our students know and are able to do. It's the only reason school systems exist. And this is the first step, is to have a focused mindset. And until boards have a focused mindset, and that, that our school system only exists to, to improve student outcomes and, and that our, our chance at improving outcomes lives in my change and my adult behaviors. Like until that is where we choose to stand, we're not in the most optimal position to serve children. The first step in the five that I offer in the book is, you have to have a focused mindset. Once you've got that, then it's just a matter of doing the work inside of the focused mindset, that student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. And student outcomes are the only reason we exist. The first step is to be clear about which student outcomes are we going to focus on as an organization? There's thousands of potential student outcomes that the organization will focus on. The job of the board is to listen to those and to clarify the vision and values by enumerating them, having just a few. You can't have 50 goals. We're not going to get all those things done. You have to prioritize. We have to clarify the priorities. That's the second step. A focused mindset and then clarify the priorities. Once you are operating from a focused mindset and you've clarified the priorities of the community, the community's vision and values, you've written them down. Then the remaining three steps are just operationalizing that. It's monitoring progress toward the vision and values. It's aligning the resources of the organizations with those vision and values. And it's communicating the results of all of this effort back to the community, who are the true owners of the organization. Board members do not own the school system. We're simply trustees, caretakers on behalf of our community. The superintendent most certainly does not own the school system. They are hired hand brought in, but this is the community's schools, the community's children, the community's resources, the community's vision and values. And so it's, it's an obligation of the board to report back to the community what the results are. That's the fifth step. And so there's a focused mindset, clarify the priorities, monitor progress, align resources and communicate results.
That's awesome. So is, so why do school boards get sidetracked? I mean, what, what really, is there like a number one thing that just makes them go oops? Or silver statement over there or whatever?
And this takes us back to really one of your first questions, which is, I wish I'd had this book. If I'm being completely candid with you, with the benefit of hindsight, as I look back, for the majority of my first two years on the board, children were not blessed by my presence being there. That in fact, there are moments where it's clear to me now that I did more harm than good, that children would have been better off had I not been on the board, particularly in those first six months, that I simply didn't have an understanding of what mattered, what made a difference. And there was no preparation out there that, that gave that to me by default. And that's what I want. I want by default, people to show up and have insight into how can I make manifest my passion for what's possible for children? But, but that, in so few places that exists. You know, when we were conducting this study of looking at all of the different states to figure out, do any states even require that boards receive trading on what it is to improve student outcomes? Have they actually set goals and monitored progress? And of all the states across the, across the country, only four do, only four. The rest of the states unfortunately then are in a position where they're kind of hoping that, that people of goodwill can magically figure it out. That is not a strategy that is honoring children. And, and to be clear, you know, 30 years ago, maybe that, that made sense because we didn't have the research literature that really bears out what is the change in adult behavior in the boardroom that can most drive performance improvements for students in the classroom? We, we didn't have that 30 years ago. We didn't really have that 20 years ago. It's really only the last decade, 15 years that we've had it started to have a really robust set of evidence in the research literature around what are the behaviors in the boardroom that can most give rise to performance improvements for students in the classroom? But we have it now. And it's on us and every board serving organization, your organization, my organization, all of us to constantly be reevaluating our adult behavior to figure out, are we passing along the information about what is it in the knowledge, skills and mindsets of boards that can most set them up to realize their aspirations for children? That, that, that's on us, Stephen. It's, it's you and I, and it's, it's all of us who serve school boards across the country. We've got to change our adult behaviors to be in alignment with the research evidence that is only recently available. And, and I get it. There are board members across the country who've been on the board longer than the evidence has existed. They've been on the board 10, 20, 30. I've met some folks been on the school board 40 years. And so they can be forgiven for not, for not having had access to the, to the evidence when they come on the board, because it didn't exist yet. And to a limited extent, they can even be somewhat forgiven for not having access to it now, because a lot of their organizations, our organizations, you would be, are in large part not providing this information systematically yet. It's on us who have made a commitment in our service, that we're going to, we're going to serve children by serving the leaders of those children, by serving the superintendents and school boards. It's on us to begin to get really, really aggressive about spreading the news about, here's the evidence of what boards can do to really be great on behalf of the students they serve.
That is awesome. Your book is Great on Their Behalf, Why School Boards Fail, How Yours Can Become Effective. I mean, this is, I kid you not, everyone listening, this is something that, you know, maybe you just need to buy it for your, for your superintendent to then create enough copies to spread out through the group or something like this and reach out to AJ. So this is, this is incredible. Now, I, I hate, I want to, I got to honor your time here. This is good. But I got to, I want to make sure that I ask you this. I mean, you've written a lot of, of stuff and you've got, you've got a new book that you're working on that's due out September of 2024. It's called Rogue School Board Members Handbook. You want to give the audience a preview?
Yeah, no, I was definitely, for all my fellow rogues out there, this is my love letter, love letter to all of us. You know, that rogue board, if you've ever been the one in an eight-one vote, if you've ever been the one, you know, in a six-one vote on your school board, that one in that four-one vote on your school board, you know, this one is for you. I was definitely that, that eight-one, I was the one. So for all my rogue school board members out there, would I spend time to write? And it's actually written, but I've, I've got to rewrite it now that Great on Their Behalf is out, because I needed to have some alignment issues. And so that's why I don't think I'll release it until middle of next year. But it really is intended to be, how do we, how do we help folks who find themselves on the outside of the board majority, still manage to be great on behalf of the students they serve? You know, this book is really about what the board can do as a whole, but it, it makes that assumption, that the board is, is rowing as one and, and looking to move and grow in this direction. The, the, the next, the next conversation is what happens when that's not the case.
Gotcha. Good stuff. This is awesome. So, so got that to look forward to coming out middle of next year, which is awesome. And, and so I want to ask you a question, AJ. If you had the chance to talk with a statewide organization of school system superintendents, so superintendents, not the, not the school boards, what would, what would you share with them that you would want them to think about as they left your talk? What's that one thing or two things that you'd go, yeah, as they're walking away, they're talking about it?
You all stepped into the superintendency for one reason and one reason only, is because you, you want to serve children in a powerful way. You want to ensure that there's growth, improvement in what students know and are able to do as a result of your stewardship. That is why you chose the superintendency. That is why you took a incredibly arduous task where there is no kindness, there's no thank yous coming. Truly, your reward will only be in heaven and in the joy that you gain from seeing children learn under your stewardship. That's why you chose the role of superintendency. As a way of honoring why you chose that, my invitation is to make a demand of your board, that you be evaluated on are children actually growing? And that that be the majority, more than 50% of your annual evaluation, that the board set goals for what students should know and be able to do, and that you make the decision that I want to be evaluated on are we winning the game? I don't want to be evaluated only on are we getting first downs? That can be part of it. Maybe that's 49% of the evaluation, maybe it's 40%, maybe it's 30%. But let 50, 51, 60, 70% of my evaluation superintendent evaluate me on are we actually scoring points? Don't evaluate me on are we getting first downs? We still got to get first downs, you know? We got to get some first downs out here. I'm not discounting those. I'm just saying that getting first downs is not synonymous with getting touchdowns. And so that's, that is the, that is the plea that I would make with every superintendent across the country. If your board is not yet on this journey, be the catalyst for them being on this journey by placing a mandate on them that I want to be evaluated on are we actually scoring for children? That, that the joy of my heart as a superintendent is to be the catalyst for improvement to student outcomes, please evaluate me on that basis.
That is awesome. Love it. Love it, love it, love it. The, you know, AJ, do you do speaking engagements, Q and A sessions or appearances? I mean, come on.
Every, every now and then.
Oh, that's cool. Cool. So it doesn't like I'm putting on your spot here. We got, it's, so if someone wanted to follow up and connect with you and/or learn more, where would you send them?
Yeah, just shoot me an email, just aj@ajcrable.com or you can easily track me down at the book's website, greatontheirbehav.com, where there's also a lot of resources from the book and additional reading and some tools that people can use to start evaluating their school boards. There's a great time use evaluation tool on the website so that you can look at current board meetings and evaluate what percentage of the board meetings actually focus those student outcomes. That's a joyful conversation to begin. People want to know the place to start, start right there. What percentage of our minutes in this, in our board meetings are actually focused on have students improved on what they know and are able to do? Not all the adult inputs, not all the first downs. Have we actually gotten kids into the end zone? What change in what students know and are able to do have we actually experienced since last month when we got together as a school board? That, that would be a fun thing to do. And there's a great tool on the website, greatontheirbehav.com to let folks do it.
That is awesome. And I will put those links in the show notes as well as your email address so that they can reach out to you. That would be cool.
Excellent.
And awesome stuff. So I got two last questions I, I like to ask my guests, and they don't have anything to do with what we were talking about, but kind of do. So here's the first one, AJ. How do you keep going when so much is going on that you may want to quit?
You know, this, you know, it's a keen insight on your behalf, obviously having been in the work a long time yourself, you know, there, there are a lot of days when you don't really know if I made the difference. I can think of so many times when I would go home from the school or go home from a school board meeting and honestly, just literally cry of just like, dear God, please let the choices I made today actually bear the fruit that I intend for them to. Cause we don't actually know. Like in the education business, we are planters of seeds, but we're not always, we don't always have the privilege of being, of being harvester of fruit. Like that, often that comes much later. And so it's, it's hard to know. And so it's a keen insight on your part that sometimes it can be tough to keep going. You know, my, I've been benefited by being surrounded by just a really, really remarkable team. And, and it's inside of the support of those folks that I've been able to really experience the, the joy and the reassurance necessary to, to really stay faithful in the work. And so having people who hold me accountable, but also lift me up when, when I'm feeling discouraged. And so I, I would just encourage, you know, you, there's, there's no, that there's no substitute for just really being surrounded by, you know, people who are willing to hold you accountable, tell you the things that you need to hear, not what you want to hear. But also offer that word of encouragement when things are down. One other pro tip is I keep a me file. I keep a email folder that is specifically loving and encouraging things that I heard from teachers and board members and educators and students that I work with. And when things just really suck, I'll just go, I'll read some of those. Often they're, the emails have photos of students that I've been working with, you know, students taking selfies and all this stuff, or we'll take a big group photo. And so leaning back into the joy that I've brought to others and the difference I've made for others, having a specific repository for that is, is helped to be a source of encouragement for me.
That is awesome. Love it. All right. Last question. Do you have a teacher in your past who made a difference in your life? If so, who was it? And what would you say if given the chance to say, thank you?
You know, I, I can't imagine the answer to this question for anyone is no. And if there's anyone out there for whom the answer is no, I have a bounding sense of mourning for that person. Cause everybody I talk to, everybody's got that one teacher who really, really made a difference. One of the things that I'm joyful about is in the book, I actually open up in the introduction to the book, I tell a story about two of my teachers who really, really made a difference for me, Mr. Barth and Mrs. Barfield. They, I've only recently upon reconnection, gotten the full story of just how much of their careers they put on the line to put up with and advocate for this truly obnoxious, problematic, problem starting, problem making, problem perpetuating student that I was in that school. And that they really, in a lot of ways, kind of crossed the line and, you know, broke some of the rules in order to be a protective hedge around me and create for me opportunities that I clearly had not earned for myself. And so I, it was the great joy of my heart to be able to give a shout out to both of them in the introduction of the book and the difference that they made, that I, I get to have this conversation with you, I get to have the story I have today because of the difference that they and a lot of other public school educators made in my life.
Excellent. Thank you so much for sharing. AJ, thanks so much for talking with me. Your book, Great on Their Behalf, Why School Boards Fail, How Yours Can Become Effective is so much needed. You have such an awesome focus. I wish you the best in all you do.
Thank you so much, Stephen.
Hey, you have been listening to Teaching, Learning, Leading K-12, a podcast to help you help kids achieve their dreams. Teaching, Learning, Leading K-12 is a member of the Education Podcast Network, podcasts for educators, podcasts by educators. Teaching, Learning, Leading K-12 is a member of the Podcast Network based in Canada called Voice Ed Radio. Voice Ed Radio, your voice is right here. The opinions expressed on Teaching, Learning, Leading K-12 are those of the guests and hosts. Teaching, Learning, Leading K-12 is intended to share ideas, advice and suggestions. Teaching, Learning, Leading K-12 is produced for educational purposes. Hey, thanks for listening. It would be awesome if you visited my website at stevenmiletto.com and connected with me, left a review and listened to more episodes. And by the way, you could also share it with your friends, with your family and your colleagues. Thanks so much. You're awesome.